Generosity and everybody coming in here. We have a great program plan and what we're gonna do, Katherine's gonna explain it in a minute, but we're gonna have the school board come first and you're gonna be sitting at these tables and she will give you instructions. We have three microphones, two microphones at each table so you're gonna have to share, but that's alright, that'll work. So Katherine, if you want to come on and get us started. Before we actually get started, we're gonna have Karen go ahead and pray for this event tonight.
Alright, let us pray. Let me just again thank you for your presence here tonight. Thank you for your influence over the city. Thank you for the impact you've made in this place. We thank you Father for all that are coming forward tonight as candidates. We pray Father for just wisdom, discretion, and sermon as was prayed earlier and that we might listen carefully to hear what their heart is for this city according to your will. Bless us now Father and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. First, like she said, welcome. We truly appreciate you guys coming out. We are excited. So we would also like to thank everybody who is involved in the planning. Barbara, you're amazing. Love her, thank you. And we wanna thank all of the candidates for agreeing to participate and coming and joining. So tonight we're gonna have three separate panel discussions. The first one is the school board and there's seven participants. The second will be the city council and there's six participants. And then the mayoral panel has three candidates. So that will be our third discussion. At this time, I want to invite the school board members and the candidates to come forward and take a seat anywhere at these two tables. You have been given a place card with your name. Please place your name in front of you. That way everyone can clearly see who is speaking, when it's your turn. There should be enough for everybody. Both here to see here. It doesn't matter where. No ma'am, there's no.
We just had one that didn't show up.
Yes, we had one who was unable to attend. So perfect, done, thank you. Okay, so explanation how this is gonna work this evening. We are actually gonna work from our youngest candidate here on the left side all the way to our candidate on the right hand side. Each candidate is going to receive the same question the first time. So there's one question that every candidate is gonna have the opportunity to answer. Every question thereafter will be at a lottery, which we've already chosen the number prior to starting here. So we are going to give each candidate an opportunity. You're gonna get three minutes to introduce yourself to who you are. We'd like if you would state your name and why you wanna run for this great independent school district. So Eric Gale is our timekeeper. He is the one who's gonna keep us on time because we all know it's valuable. So we're gonna go ahead and get started. Alright, Monty, if you'll make sure to speak into the microphone, that way we can... No, you can just sit there, we're trying to time purposes. So go ahead, we're gonna have three minutes of each.
Can you hear me? My name is Monty Huffman. I'm a lifelong resident attorney in Texas for 50 years. Hey, I can even say that I was born in this town. I believe in it. I believe in the people in this community, the students. I've been married to my wife Kara Jones Huffman for 29 years. We have five children, three grandchildren. All of them, one son still left from high school. We're alternately graduates. I currently work for the United States Postal Service for the past 26 years. We're out four, we're out two. I've been involved in numerous organizations in this community. Retired firefighter over 20 years on the Trinity Fire Department. I currently serve for Constable Casey as his deputy constable for the past 27 years. I served on the Trinity County Appraisal District Board of Directors. I had opportunity to serve for 18 years with youth baseball. I'm a proud Mason here in town. I think it's quite a bit. But the reason that, you know, want to seek reelection to the Board of Trustees is I have a passion for it, a strong passion. With nine years under my belt so far, I feel like we have made a lot of gains. Yes, there's always gonna be negative talk, but you can't listen to that negative talk that's out there and overlook the good things that's happened over the past nine years or as long as it's been. You know, every district, you know, has the same problems. In 2017, I went through the Texas Association of School Boards Master Trustee Program and graduated that. I traveled all over the state of Texas to every district size you can think of. We all have the same problems. Teacher retention is the number one. Teachers are leaving at a historical rate in the state of Texas right now. It's hard to keep them. It's hard to keep superintendents. You know, our grades are getting better. You know, it's a work in progress. You know, education, it takes a long time to see the true thing out of it. It takes a long time. I've learned that. Well, I'll pass it on to the next person, let you know.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Walden and I unfortunately did not grow up here. I grew up in a small town in West Texas, but I grew up coming here and found my second home when I attended Camp Olympia. And shortly after graduating from Texas Tech, I moved here and I've been here for the last 25 years, so I consider myself a transplant. And, but my husband Cody and I have made our home here and we have raised our two boys. My oldest son Peyton is a freshman at A&amp;M and our youngest son Kate is a freshman at the high school. So, and if I'm not at camp, you will find Cody and I out at all of the baseball... well, we go to the baseball because we've come over from soccer or track meets or whatever, so we're out cheering on our Trinity Tigers. So I've been a director at Camp Olympia now for the last five years as a co-director, but have worked out there for the last 25 years. I do work with kids. I...not in the classroom, but I do work with...we work with about 1,300 kids a summer. Manager of staff is about 250 college-age kids that come in. And I see their problems and I work with them and we know that things are tough. COVID has been hard on them. I've spent many hours in webinars the last two or three years working on mental health issues, COVID protocols, gender identity, all the different things that are going through these kids and what they're dealing with. And just using my time to educate myself on how to handle different situations and help these kids. It really is my desire to see Trinity be the best that it can be. I want what's best for these kids. I feel they deserve a really safe place when they come, when they go to school. Someplace where they can be loved unconditionally, but also be given the services and stuff that they need. And I think a lot of that, they need some consistency, they need discipline. And our kids need to be supported as well as our teachers and we need to give them every opportunity that we can to make them the best that they can when they graduate and send them out to the world to be better people. My experience is obviously I've worked with kids for the last 25 years. I've also been appointed to the State of Texas Youth Camp Advisory Committee where I sat on there for six years. I have also been a member of our Camp Association for Mutual Progress, which is an organization in Texas where I was on the board for four years. I've also helped on the Trinity Boys and Girls Club when they first started. But I really just wanna be able to see our kids be able to succeed and give them every opportunity that they can.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hello, my name's Kevin Cersey. First of all, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank y'all for coming and being able to hear the candidates and just being informed and see who's coming into your offices. And I thank you in advance for your votes and coming to the polls. Again, my name's Kevin Cersey. I am with the Houston Fire Department. I've been a firefighter in Houston for 20 years. I'm a graduate at San Houston State University. I graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice police science. I've been in Trinity for 30 years. I met my wife at San Houston. We've been married for 30 years and I have two beautiful daughters that were raised here in Trinity, graduated Trinity. Both of them graduated with honors at San Houston. My oldest is now in her doctor program at the University of Texas Medical Branch in OT program. And my youngest daughter just started her doctor program at Baylor and she is going to be in their PT program. I was elected and have been a part of this board for 10 years. I'm currently serving as a president and I've been put in that place by my colleagues and I appreciate every minute that I've served there and the struggles and the issues that we face, what we face has been dealt with in a transparent way. The reason that I want or I'm seeking reelection is very simple. I love these kids, I love Trinity. I wanna see them receive the best that they can have and make sure that this board continues to operate in a transparent way. I want to make sure that these kids are put first in every decision that's made in this board. To continue to develop the policies that help them and be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We have a very healthy fund balance, very proud of that. I think there's a lot of schools our size that would love to have our fund balance. There's a lot of good things going on in our school. We continue to make progress and I don't feel like I'm through. I wanna continue to make our schools better. I think we have a lot of work to do. We've done a lot of good work, but I still think there's a lot to go. Thank you.
Please make sure to have your mic right in front of your face. It might sound loud to you because you're here, but out in the crowd, we need that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I wanna thank you for coming out. This is a hard thing to do, you know, everybody right and left out here. It's a hard thing to get up and try to fight the thing in your community and I appreciate everybody coming forward tonight, all of you candidates and everybody running again. I might be a little candid with my speech because I've been working on this for a while because I am an outsider too. My wife and I are new to the Trinity area. We've only been up here since 2016. Bought a crazy piece of property and moved up here from Houston and got into the area. For those that don't know, again, my name is Chris Garco. A little bit about me, I grew up in central Illinois, so yeah, I'm a darn Yankee. But I grew up on a small farm up there in a town very similar to Trinity and that's kinda why we liked settling here in Trinity. It reminded me back home a lot, grew up in something very similar. I'm married, my wife Rebecca back there, she's also been an educator here. We both taught in the Trinity School District, so we know the kids very well. I graduated from Eastern Illinois University with my Bachelor of Science in Biomechanical Engineering. Leading into that, I enlisted in the US Army in 1993 and then later when I graduated from EIU, I commissioned as a second lieutenant. Spent the next 23 years of my life on active duty all over the world and all kinds of wonderful places and not such wonderful places. Along the way, after I retired from the Army, I did the typical things, got out of the Army. I did law enforcement, fire department, and then I decided, you know, I need to quit destroying my body, so I finally used my degree. Spent the rest of my time in the corporate world, in oil and gas, engineering, project management, those kind of things. Very typical. But along the way, some things I wanna bring up with my educational background. Thanks to Uncle Sam, I was able to get a college education. And while I was in the Army, I got to go to the University of Illinois. I attended the Army and Naval War Colleges and I also attended the Command and General Staff College before I got out of the Army. And it was very fortunate, thanks to Uncle Sam, to get quite a bit of education. After that, in the engineering side, anything like that, we settled up here in the Trinity area. And then COVID hit, so I jumped away from corporate America because Rebecca had taught here. We knew the kids, we knew the area, we had gotten into a lot of people in Trinity and I saw what was going on. I come from an educational background. My mom was a 41-year teacher, my grandmother was a teacher, my wife's a teacher, my sister's a principal, kinda runs in the family. So one of the smart things my mom did is reminded me when I was getting my bachelor's to get a minor in education. So fast forward to a couple of years ago, during COVID, I went and got my teacher certification, started at Huntsville for a semester, then jumped on board and had been teaching up until last fall here in the Trinity School District in the middle school. Some of you guys know me, I've had some of your kids, I've worked with a lot of your kids, fell in love with it. All the crazy things I've done in my life, absolutely fell in love with teaching, never thought I would like it that much. Unfortunately, last fall, all of my combat injuries and things started catching up with me. I had to step away in December. Oh, sorry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Don Fisher and I'm a candidate for a Trinity Independent School District. Me and my wife have lived here in Trinity for over 26 years. We raised two daughters here. Deanna, she graduated in 2017 and then she also graduated last May from Texas City. We raised her as well as Kayla Fisher. Kayla, I don't know if you've paid attention to newspapers, but she's very particular in the powerlifting industry and she has a nick for that, I was gonna say that. And she's graduating this year, next month, and then she'll go on to Prairie Valley to get her masters and then she's gonna move on to get her masters of business. I don't have an educational background. My background is straight out of high school, went to the military, served in the military and when I got out of it, went into law enforcement corrections. Me and my wife, we've been together, like I said, over 28 years. She's put over, correction, 26 years, she's put over 28 years working for CPS. She's the regional director that covered the surrounding counties for Harris County. She started off right here in Trinity and she moved on up the chain from that on. My youngest daughter, she works in Huntsville and my, excuse me, my oldest daughter works in Huntsville. My youngest daughter again, she's gonna be graduating. And the little while I wanna be a school board member is there's a lot of issues, just like one of the previous candidates stated, there's the issue that's going on and I'm not gonna say that they have not been positively or correctly addressed, but I just believe that it needs to be addressed and some either steps put in place to try to help prevent that from happening again in the future. Sorry, my bad. Our school system is a foundation-like community. I'm passionate about bringing people together, so our school system will be the strength which will improve the opportunity of all our children. Bullying and making sure that the kids go to school, just like one of the previous candidates stated, that they feel loved and that they feel like they can go to school without being bullied and harassed and they can go there and that's a safe environment. Okay, my daughter was bullied and I'm not gonna go into details, but she knows about that, just like I know firsthand about that. So we need to address the bullying as well as some other issues as well. I am very clear about the top priority if I'm elected to the school board and that is being leading and thoughtful and respectful teaching. The teachers need to be supported, need to be respected as well as the teachers. I'm open-minded to listen to everybody, the parents, the students, the community, the staff. We have to support our teachers. Once I was driving down the little driveway right there at the high school, we noticed that there's signs for every student that's graduating this year, they're going to Blinn, Angelina, Sam, some of the military. So we are graduating with good quality students.
Thank you, Don, we appreciate you.
How y'all doing? My name's Bubba Shannon Fish or Michael Shannon Fish. Most of y'all don't use Bubba. I just wanna say thank y'all for allowing us to come out here today and just be able to speak to you all and just be able to share what we feel and what we think that we can bring to this board. I've lived in Trinity my whole life. Graduated here in 97. I'm married to Brandy Shannon Fish for 15 years in October. We have two kids, Peyton, which he graduated from Trinity. Now he's at Laterno seeking a pilot's license so he can go into the military by some of these other gentlemen. And I have McKenzie, she's a freshman in high school and, you know, she's trying to graduate from here as well. So the reason why I'm running is over these last few months, we've had several people come and stress that they want change, that our community needs a change, our school needs a change. You know, they came to me because they know who I am, they know what I'm about. They know that I love this town, they know that I care and I'm not afraid of change and I'm not afraid to stand up for what's right and what we need. I'm not a yes man. I will call it out and I will say what I think's right and what's wrong and I think we need that sometimes. I'm keep it short and sweet, I don't have a lot to say. You know me, if you don't know me, ask somebody. I love this place, this is always home. So I thank y'all and I do appreciate y'all putting this on and giving us this opportunity. And I do wanna say thank you to the school board itself, y'all have done an amazing job. I have nothing negative to say about any of y'all and I thank y'all for what y'all done. So thank y'all.
Thank you all, we appreciate it. Okay, after I explain earlier, we are going to have questions per candidate. There is only one question that will be the same, so learn. That was supposed to be funny. Are y'all awake? Okay, so here's the question. Monty, you're gonna be the first. As it relates to mental health, what specific ideas do you have to improve or create an effective program for developing students?
Well, in Trinity TISD right now, we have a certified mental health counselor that is employed by the district. Students that have problems can go speak with her and talk to her, wish she can get them in the right position to seek the right help. We have strived for that over the years. It's an ever-growing situation throughout the state of Texas and the nation for student mental health. It needs to be taken serious and I feel that TISD is taking it serious. You know, we're doing exactly what we feel like we need to do to make sure that students, you know, that have problems are taken care of. It's a difficult thing to, you know, answer correctly. It's one of those type of things.
Share your heart, that's what it's about.
Will you just repeat it, just so I just wanna make sure?
As it relates to mental health, what specific ideas do you have to improve or create an effective program for developing students?
Well, I was just on a webinar on Thursday talking about MESH, which is Mental Emotional Social Health, as they refer to it. And, you know, in seeing kids firsthand coming out of COVID and not knowing how to interact with their peers or being in front of a screen and it's very challenging and a lot of it is creating a safe place for kids to be able to, to be able to have an avenue that they can talk to people. And I think, I think Trinity's done a great job in that we do already have something in place, but I think we're going to continue to see more issues arise and, but having facilities and stuff available to parents and to the kids, but also educating our teachers on how to deal with the kids, I think is one of the more important things. You know, we teach, you know, at camp, we teach our counselors how to deal with bullies and, you know, what does bullying look like and creating a safe environment and things like that. But at the same time, you have to give them the tools to how to handle and interact in these situations. And being able to, I think, help entrant teachers will be really important and also to help de-escalate a situation that might happen in a classroom or something that can then be able to be addressed. But, you know, these teachers are on the front ground and they're the ones that are probably could save a lot of these kids because the parents may not be as involved in these. That's why I think our schools are so important because these are the one place that kids can get, get the help that they need. And so I really do think being able to give information and training our teachers and stuff, how to help, help interact and be able to understand. They're not gonna be able to handle every situation and they shouldn't, so.
Okay, I would like to preface my answer with a little bit of information. I attended a Region Six grassroots meeting in which out of Region Six, out of the top five issues that schools are facing in Region Six is mental health. And again, at Winter Governance, many of those continuing education classes were about mental health. And on the second day of our Winter Governance, they have what they call a student voice and students from across Texas come and speak to superintendents and board members about issues that are going on in their school. And several of these, like I said, several of these classes were about mental health and the issues that students across the state are facing. And again, it was one of the top five issues in the state of Texas. As far as Trinity goes, as Monty pointed out, we do have the one mental, mental health counselor on campus. We have visions of having a mental health counselor on every campus. It's very important to have that, someone for these students and staff to be able to talk to, to get their issues heard. A lot of times, these students need to be heard, they need their issues to be heard, it needs to be recognized and dealt with appropriately. And so the best way that I can say what we need to do is to get a counselor on every campus and we're working towards that now.
Christopher? Do you want me to repeat the question? No, I think I got it.
I know I didn't get to talk about why I wanted to run for school board. This is one of my issues. Having talked the last two years in the middle school, this is a passionate thing with me. I, my background is I am a suicide and PTSD counselor with the VA. I've talked soldiers down off the wall. And as a teacher the last two years, this is a top issue. We do have a wonderful mental health counselor for the district, but we need a little more. We need that support. We need somebody to work with us teachers to help us, because not all teachers may have my background and they have a kid that breaks down in class, they need that support. And I love that we're trying to get a counselor at every campus. We need qualified and certified counselors. I know we're a small district, but there's money to be found and this is one of my tenets of why I'm running for the board, is to get that. Because I saw it with our kids firsthand, I saw it as a teacher. She's overtasked, she's a wonderful mental health specialist, she works her butt off, but she needs some help, she needs a support team. And the teachers need that extra bit of training to be her support team at every campus. Because we have great kids in this district, there are some amazing kids in this district that are academically wonderful and we can't leave them behind. So we've gotta start with mental health, we've gotta start with understanding how to balance out what we need in this district. And that is just one of the key things of why I'm running, because I got to see it firsthand for the last two years and these kids are kinda getting left behind. They need somebody to go to and they need somebody that they can talk to, that is going to support them and work with them. So I definitely wanna be a part of trying to make that happen, even if I'm not on the board, I'm still gonna give 100% to try and make these things happen in our district.
Okay, the bullying issue that I made a point in when I made my announcement or my opening speech, that is part of the mental portion of the reason why I'm running, okay? These students, they gotta feel like they gotta, they come to school free from bullying. I've been in law enforcement over 26, 23 years, working on 24 years, there was a little break in there when I worked for Montgomery County Juvenile Services. But I've seen bullying from kids to other kids in my law enforcement career, seen mental health issues. You'll be surprised if we don't take care of this now, while they're in school, it'll be an issue later on in life and that's what I want to help try to prevent. And the other candidate, they made a statement that we do have a good counselor, I never met her, and I'm assuming that she's real good at her job, but like Mr. Christopher said, stated, we need, you know, help, they need help. The teachers can't do it, they can't do it by themselves, they need help as far as, you know, more counselors, more programs, more signs to be able to see what's going on. They gotta teach and do the mental and do the disciplinaria on the front level as well, as well as, you know, referring to the principal and the assistant principal, you know, they need help and they need certain programs. So what I would suggest is, you know, put a team, you know, the counselor, preacher, pastor, an external counselor if that's what possible, to see if they all can, you know, come together to see which one of those, that student, which one of those they wanna talk to. They may not wanna talk to the counselor at the school, they may not wanna talk to the preacher, they may wanna talk to some external counselor, they may not wanna talk to that person, they may wanna talk to preacher. There's somebody out there that they do wanna talk to, they get it off their chest. There's somebody out there that they do want to talk to, to get it off their chest and to get their situation addressed. And, being in law enforcement, I know it didn't start when there was a bully. It started out when there was a kid. And I was a kid, we all were kids, we all made fun of, you know, one another, we all got poked at or whatever. But there was a line that needed to be drawn, and I don't think some of these kids know that.
Thank you, Don.
I would say it starts with open communication between our kids, our students, our students, our teachers, and our parents. That's where I would start. But I think we just need to work towards programs that would give our kids a safe place. Get more training in with our teachers to identify. Identification of someone that's struggling with mental health, that's a big start. And just working towards, you know, programs that will help them. I mean, we all have to do our part when it comes to mental health because it can take over your body, it can destroy your life. Having a counselor is great, but like I said, working towards having one for each school is, it's a big thing. That will help many kids and allow people to be able to see before it gets too deep into their life. Like I said, thank you.
Thank you. Now, that was all the qualifier questions, so they were all as the same. From this point forward, each is going to receive a different question, okay? So, we'll have several different topics. Monty, we're going to go ahead and start with you. And there was a random number picked and it qualifies with on here, so out the door, you get a tough one, okay? What is your stance on gender equality and pronoun choice?
Definitely, this is a tough question here. I do not.
It was the one that was asked multiple times from the community. So, it's a topic that they wanted to hear. Okay, Michelle, so the next question. How, do you agree or disagree that critical race theory has a place in our classrooms?
I think, I think it's important to educate our kids. And a lot of that, though, is, parents need to be involved as well as what they're being taught. And, you know, but not every kid comes home to discuss what they're learning. And so, but I do think, I do think it's important to be able to discuss with kids, but they also need to know that they get to have their own opinion. And an opinion should not be forced upon them while they're at school.
Kevin, do you agree, I'm sorry, how should the community measure your effectiveness and accomplishments during your term?
That's a good question. To measure one's accomplishments in a term is very difficult because change in a school district comes over a long period of time. Change in school with grades, you know, we're all dealing, we deal with the STAR tests, and those changes take place over several years. It takes place, none of those changes take place fast in a school. That's just, I guess, the master of education. It's, nothing's fast. So, you have to look at it over a longer period of time. Maybe not as just, if you're in term for three years, it may take six years down the road to see accomplishments from that term. So, you really have to be involved and know what's going on in your school and see those small steps taking place. We have made huge strides over the several years that we've been on the board. And those, the strides that we've made, we're still not where we need to be. We still have work to do, as any district does. But it's a slow process, it takes time.
Christopher, do you agree or disagree with sex education in the school? If yes for sex education, at what age or what grade level do you feel it's appropriate to begin?
I do agree with it as an educational foundation, but I agree with it at the later ages in school. I believe it should be, and I know I'm sounding old fashioned because I grew up in a small town in Illinois, but it's more of a high school topic, I think, as the kids are developing. Now, caveat that, think about our kids nowadays. Social media, internet, technology devices, the world as it is. Our kids, no matter where we are, as recessed as we are in Trinity, they know a lot more than we do. So, I believe that it should not be in the undergrades, but I do believe that it should be a part of health education and understanding as the kids are maturing and their bodies are changing. So, I think it should be age-appropriate and it should be taught, again, by certified individuals. And I miss the old days, what happened to health class and things like that? So, that's where I would say that would come into play when these kids are starting to effectively go through these changes in their body. And it is sooner. I mean, unfortunately, it's happening in junior high. We had it in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. But there is a time and place for it, and it needs to be a part of appropriate educational program. And I don't like the way it's being shoved down people's throats and things by bureaucracies and politicians. So, I do believe that it should be an educational foundation. It should be parent-understood, school board agreed upon, with community intake on it. But I do believe it's part of health and science. I mean, the kids got to know, they're getting externals nowadays that we can't deal with or we have to fight with. So, I think there should be a strong foundation that helps these kids get the right path. And unfortunately, it should be blunt sometimes as they get older. I don't see it at the younger grades.
Thank you. Don, how many school board meetings have you attended? And how do you see yourself being an asset to the school board?
Well, unfortunately, I've only attended the school boards that involve my kids. And I know that's sad, but we do have a couple of, I won't say friends, that's on the school board that I could go to and ask if there was anything that I missed that was pertinent, that was detrimental, you know, to the school. But as far as me, myself, being an asset, was that part of the question? If I'm part of something, I'm going to see it to the end. So, therefore, just because I haven't been to a good amount of the school board meetings as a taxpayer, as a father, as a volunteer, when I volunteered a time at the school for the football games, helping out with the coaches with the powerlifting, and helping out other staff members and other sporting events, doesn't mean that I'm not going to be at the school board meetings whenever they're scheduled to be meeting. So, the asset is that I'll be there, I'll listen, I have the community's ear, I have your ear, the parents' ear, the taxpayers' ear. Even though you don't have the kids, if you own the property in the school district, you have an interest in what's going on in the school district as far as the school board, and because it's your money, it's the taxpayers' money that's going for the superintendent, the teachers, the building, upkeep, the maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. So, I have your, I have your interest at heart.
Thank you. Michael, in a small town, there is normal chatter which causes conflict. As a member of the school board, what is your method of conflict resolution?
Well, my method would be to listen to all sides and see what's going on. And I would try to find a way to let people see the right, what's really going on, what's really happening. I think a lot of times, we hear everything secondhand and we're not willing to take that step to actually learn. And so, that would be what we would have to do, I would have to do, is try to get them to see that middle ground, let them see what the truth is and what's really happening.
Monty, what are your top two personal reasons for running for school board?
To continue what we have started, you know, the past nine years that I've been honored to be on the board. To see that every child in our district, no matter their race, color, you know, anything, every child deserves the same education, no matter their stature in life. You know, a lot of kids don't come from wealth, a lot of them come from, you know, tough times. We're a 90% economically disadvantaged district. I want to see us keeping the food program going. Every kid in our district for the past six years have received, you know, breakfast, lunch, and some take dinner home. The programs where we can give them food for the weekend, the backpack club, the backpack, they call them backpack buddies. Kids that don't have food at home, they send them home with food. You know, we need to keep that going. We need to keep our kids that are interested in college education classes going in that direction. Because a kid can graduate and basically go into college as a sophomore. TISD pays 100% of their tuition and books, that's a big thing. We offer 15 to 16 CT courses right now. So, if you start as a freshman and graduate as a senior, you've got a certification that you can go into the workforce and start your life. I would love to see things like that continue. And, you know, there's so many career and technology classes out there that we can improve on. Automotive, you know, let kids learn how to, you know, work on cars and stuff. You know, because not every child is college. You know, we need to give them every opportunity that we can in Trinity and been the school district for success, starting in pre-K all the way to high school.
Yes, sir. Michelle, what skill set do you have that makes you the best candidate with the school board?
I think my skill set is just the amount of work that I've done with kids. I have a lot of leadership ability in the items that I have in the different areas of my industry that I've worked in and in offices that I've held. And I think that my continuing education in the camping industry goes alongside with a lot of what this district does in dealing with what the issues that kids deal with. I also deal with our dining hall and our health clinic, which are all things that go along with the district as well. So, I have a lot of experience. But I think the one thing about me is, my tagline is "A leader who listens." And to me, I'm somebody who, I don't speak a lot. I'm one of those that absorbs all the information. And, but when it's time to say something is when I'll come out. But I want to get all the information. And I think that's something is, I want to be able to hear what parents, hear what teachers, hear what students need. But also, you know, there's a side of the school board that we don't understand and we don't see because we're not privy to all the information. And I think that's hard because parents want to know everything. But there's a lot of information that goes along beside, behind everything. And being able to balance that, I think that's something that I can do because being on the state advisory board for camps, I've been able to look at what our rules and regulations are. And I have to, I had to look at them, not just what benefited my camp, but what benefited every single camp to address every kid's need in the state of Texas. And so, I think I can be very open-minded.
Thank you. Kevin, what do you feel the primary function or role as a school board member?
That's a good question, too. There's a lot of roles that a school board member takes on to be an effective school board member. You know, you have to be a good steward of taxpayers' money. That's one of the top things there. A lot of people are looking at where our taxpayers' money is going. And I believe that there's a lot of transparency in that and we have worked really well in that area. You can come and talk to us about our, I mentioned our fund balance again. We have a very healthy fund balance. A lot of the issues that, okay, can you say that one more time?
It says, "Your function or role as a school board member, what is the primary function or role as a school board member?"
Okay. And another one would be to make sure that every decision that you make, you keep the best interest of your student, your district, and your teachers at heart. You have to keep them in mind in every decision that you make. You have to keep out your personal feelings, your personal agendas. Something that may benefit you, as she said, may not be the best decision for that district. You have to make sure that you keep those decisions in line with what's best for your students, your faculty, and your district.
Christopher, tell us about a time where you demonstrated leadership while making a tough decision.
Well, that's actually tough for me with my current. I mean, I can use a military example.
Okay.
You know, with my career over 23 years, I was a combat arms officer. Enlisted time, I was a combat soldier, I was in the Ranger Regiment. I was in special operations as an officer. I've had very difficult decisions. I've lost men and women in battle. I would say I harken back to like 2009 in Afghanistan. Was one of my toughest times as a commander. I had a JSOC team, we were in southern Afghanistan near the Pakistani border. And, you know, I had multiple teams out, working with both conventional troops and other JSOC troops. And if you know who Bowie Berdahl is, the guy that walked off his fob and deserted when he ended up being a prisoner, I was supporting 425 at the time. I, we lost some special operations soldiers that were re-tasked to go hunting for him. And those were my guys. It was very hard to know the truth at the time, that you guys didn't know back then, but we did, to have to send guys out to hunt him down. And then we lost some kids, we lost some kids from 3rd Special Forces Group, we lost some kids from 425. And that has haunted me as a commander. And I've had to make those decisions to send teams to go do those things and sign off on those orders. And I went with the teams, too, I was on some of those teams. And those were some of the hardest decisions I had because I've made other combat decisions in worse situations. But that particular one was hard on me to send guys out in that particular situation, knowing they might not come back, and some didn't. And that's one of the hardest decisions I've had as a leader and things like that. But those affected me in later in life as a teacher here in the school district. I was faced with tough decisions from both administrators, fellow teachers, students having breakdowns in my classroom. And those lessons I learned back then made it a lot easier to learn with those classes now.
Thank you. Don, what are the duties of a school board member? And please give two examples.
Well, I believe the school board member's duties are to make sure that the independent school district is getting the best qualified staff members on their staff, starting with the superintendent all the way down to the bus driver. You just don't want anybody dealing with our kids, that's our future. Another example is, again, it was hit on by Kevin, you know, making sure that our taxpayers is getting everything that they get out of the money that they're paying on their taxes from the school board. Not necessarily raising them, but making sure that, you know, of course, that it doesn't be raised, but making sure that, you know, every dollar is being accounted for, that it's not being spent foolishly, that it's being spent wisely. Make sure that there's enough in case if something does come up down the road, you know, whether it be another counselor or another teacher, something dealing with the kids. This is all about the kids. This is nothing, again, there's no personal agenda, this is nothing for us. We're just here wanting to tell you that we're here wanting to represent the kids and the parents and the taxpayers for this community. And like I said, I got two daughters, one's graduated, the other one's about to graduate. So, I believe the school board needs to be an overseer of the school district staff to make sure that they're on the up and up, make sure that they're doing what they're paid to be doing. I mean, again, it is tax money that's paying their salary. So, the school board is, they're not getting paid, and it's all voluntary. And I wanted to put my time up for the task to make sure that we're getting the best representation for our kids. for our kids. Again, kids is our future.
Thank you.
And Michael, are there any new policies to be implemented or any current policies that you would like to see repealed?
I don't, I mean, I don't know how to answer that question, to be honest with you. Because I know that as you move forward, there's always going to be policies that's going to have to change. We're always going to have to grow. You know, that's the thing is with this kind of thing, is you have to grow with what's going on around us. We stay still, we don't grow whenever we're given an amount. You know, our society today, we're steadily evolving. And if we don't evolve with it, then we'll be left behind. So, I mean, I can't think of anything off the top of my head of what I would have changed or what I'd put in the policy right now. But we just have to be open-minded and be willing to make those changes if we need to, as they come.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate everyone being here. We're going to go ahead and break for five minutes, and we'll come back, and we will see the city council.